And you are on record.
Meeting of the Township of Presippany Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, July 7th, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Goldstein. Stein, sorry.
All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has something they'd like to bring to the board's attention that is not on our agenda for tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. We have a resolution in our packet, application number 24:504. We see the list of people here who can make the motion. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to move application number 24-504 FC Real Estate Group LLC 44 North February Grove, Block 531, Lot 11, Zone B5, Preliminary, and my major final site plan with C variance for construction of two second-story apartments, units over a restaurant.
Do I have a?
Second, Mealy.
Thank you. Mr. Mealy, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Smith? Oh, sorry. Shaw?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right, moving right along, we have our agenda for tonight. We have application number 25:508, Russell Bomberg, Bomberg 26 Longridge Road, Block 7, Lot, uh, Block 7, Lot 21, Zone RR, Major Soil Moving Permit. If you could come forward, tell us who you are and...
Hi, my name's Russell Bomberg.
Make sure you're...
Uh, live at 26 Longridge Road, the Pudding Stone section. Right now, the town is doing a project on the two streets that, well, one I live on and the one above it. It accumulated enormous excess of soil. I met a few times with Paul Neoff, the principal engineer for your town, Sal.
I don't mean to interrupt, but are we gonna swear him in and get his information?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, because you're now giving testimony.
I'm new, so whatever you want.
I'm gonna turn to our attorney.
Yes, hello. Please, um, raise your right hand. You said, um, promised that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name.
Russell Bomberg.
Spell it for the...
R-U-S-S-E-L-L, capital B-O-M-B-E-R-G.
And your address, please?
26 Longridge Road.
Thank you.
All right, now you're sworn in, now you can, now you can start giving us testimony.
So during that project, a couple of times, uh...
Would you sit down, please?
Me?
Yes.
Here?
No, the chair that's right by...
And speak into the microphone.
It's easier for the microphone to hear you and you...
So, in the Pudding Stone section, they're doing a project for the road. It accumulated an enormous amount of soil. My property is three acres, uh, and it slopes down in the backyard, so there's not a lot of lawn. I met with Paul Neoff, the principal engineer, um, for that project, the project manager for, uh, that's doing the project, and Sal, who's the engineering inspector.
Coach.
Yeah. Um, and I, obviously, I got plans before and after of what I would like to do. Um, I don't know if you have the letter that Paul gave to put in my packet. Um, I have copies if you all would like it, but basically, uh, the plan was reviewed and he has no objection to it. Uh, he, I guess that's it. Want a copy, I have a copy.
We have a copy.
We have the copy here. So the, this is all soil that you wish to move from your land, it's not soil that was put on there as part of somebody else's project?
No, no. It was, the town was doing a road improvement project, so they excavated from my street and they put the excess soil out. And if you're familiar, there's a Pudding Stone, it's a little community center. They piled the soil up there, so I'm looking to put that soil in my backyard.
Okay, that wasn't clear, but now it is. All right. And the engineer has...
Yeah, just some general, uh, the regular questions. Do you have a contractor that's, that's doing this work for you?
Yeah, the contractor that's doing the street improvement.
Okay.
Yes. In the letter, it states that it would be beneficial for me, the town, and the contractor.
Yeah, to give, yeah, okay. And that contractor is moving it from the location on Pudding Stone across the neighborhood down, down your street into your yard?
Mm-hmm. Around the corner.
Around the corner, okay. Um, there's a note on this recommendation from the engineering department that the office has no objection to the soil movement application. If the drainage issues are rectified and soils, um, are moved to a property that are, and then soils are clean that are moved to the property. What, are you, uh, do you, you or the contractor taking precautions to get the soil tested?
Um, if I have to, I will, but I think in the letter, I think they said the soil is native to our area or my street, so...
All right, I'll just, I'll recommend that a condition that, that they, um, this recommendation from the board, um, is conditional on this last sentence of the engineer's letter that, uh, all drainage issues are rectified and the soil is clean. It's just in the last sentence.
Well, clean, uh, does he mean clean by being screened?
No, I, I, well, I don't know what it means, so I'm saying, as long as it's the satisfaction of the engineering department.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions, my members of the board?
I'll also say, as far as drainage, yes, it could be rectified. Where I'm putting this, where the soil would end, there's an additional 450 feet of my property that goes back. It goes from the street back 660 feet. So as far as runoff, yes, it would be rectified, but, I mean, it's got 500 feet to...
It's all your, it's all your property.
Yeah, there is ground cover, there are every, you know, lots to absorb it.
So, so the lot grading plan, your grading plan is under the jurisdiction of the township engineer. Again, you just have to meet with their requirement regarding drainage, erosion.
That's fine.
And just to follow up on the clean soil, typically, they, they just, they typically want all soil to be tested, that it doesn't have certain contaminants, um, and that's the standard process.
All right, so do you want me or someone to talk to Paul and see?
Yeah, you should, you should clarify with Paul what their, uh, what their concern is and what, what they recommend be done.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's typical that any soil gets moved is, 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 uh, tested, that, that it, that doesn't have any contaminants.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any other members or professionals have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Two questions. So who would be moving the soil, the township contractor or your, your own contractor? Okay.
All right, any members of the public have any questions on this testimony at this time? We need anything else?
Um, no, I guess just, if we can just put on the record that the letter that was referred to is dated June 4th, 2025.
Okay, that's in our packet, so we've got it. That's a good...
Do I have it? It's a question.
Oh, I know you have it. You already told us.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Nope. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing unless there's some comments from the public. I don't hear and see any. Um, do I have somebody willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mealy?
A motion to approve application number 25:508, Russell Bomberg, 26 Longridge Road, Block 7, Lot 21, Zone R-R, Major Soil Moving Permit.
Do I have a second?
Second, Didich.
Very good. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. And Nora will walk you through what you need after this.
Okay, thank you very much, you cooperation.
Yep, okay, next we move on.
Do I go over there now or...
Uh, she'll tell you what you need, that probably...
You could call me tomorrow.
Okay.
You can go home. Yep, you're free.
Oh, yep, you're free to go.
First one that gets to leave.
First one that gets to leave, you're almost in time to watch more of Wheel of Fortune or something.
All right, take care.
All right, uh, application number 19:513 UPS 801 and 799 Jefferson Road, Block 741, Lots 1.1 and 1.2, extension of time to construct sound walls.
Good evening, Chairman. Our members of the board, board professionals, Luke Ponteir, the law firm, Dave Pitney, here tonight on behalf of the United Parcel Service. Chairman, as you just recited, we are talking about the property that's located at 799 and 801 Jefferson Road, which is Block 741, Lots 1.1 and 1.2 on the township's tax map. The property's in the SVD 5A, Specialized Economic Development District, and, uh, we are here this evening seeking a request, uh, for an extension of time to construct the improvements, which is a sound wall, that were approved back in, in 2021. Just to give a, a brief summary of how we got to where we are today, uh, so by resolution that was adopted on September 13th of 2021, this board approved the applicant's application for preliminary and final major site plan and bulk variance relief to allow for the demolition of an existing 13.5-foot-high sound wall on Lot 1.2 and to construct an approximately 32-foot-high sound wall on Lot 1.2 that extends onto Lot 1.1. Those of you that were on the board back in 2021 may recall that this application arose due to complaints from neighbors to the rear of the UPS site that actually reside in Hanover Township. So the applicant proposed the 32-foot sound wall to bring, uh, the site into compliance with state noise regulations. Uh, the complaint had resulted in a violation, uh, and so we appeared before this board to present the 32-foot-high wall as a solution to the ongoing, uh, issue with the neighbors. The board did approve it. Uh, there were neighbors here from Hanover Township as well as an attorney from Hanover Township, uh, that objected and provided comments at the application, uh, but ultimately the applicant did work with them to, to get to the approved project. Since receiving the approval, the applicant has, uh, continued to address the conditions that were imposed on that, uh, approval, including by meeting with the neighbors to continue to resolve their concerns and to ensure that, uh, what was being built would satisfy them. Uh, most recently, uh, the, the neighbors have come up with a plan for a reduced sound wall, so it would be either 16 or 24 feet as opposed to 32 feet. Uh, the applicant remains in ongoing discussions with them. They, they spoke as recently as last week, and UPS has had its noise consultant on-site regularly to continue to conduct noise assessments, uh, as operations have improved over time as well. Uh, because those discussions are ongoing, and as I did say, the, the applicant wants to ensure that what's built will satisfy the residents who had the concern, uh, UPS does respectfully request an extension of the time, uh, to build the sound wall and to ensure that it's a product that, that both they and the neighbors are happy with. As the approval was granted back in 2021, we are seeking two retroactive extensions, so the first would be from September 14th, 2023 through September 13th, 2024, and the second would then be from September 14th, 2024 through September 13th of this year, 2025. Uh, and then as we're here before you this evening, we are seeking our third extension, which would run from September 14th of this year through September 13th of 2026, uh, and that should provide us enough time to resolve the issues with the neighbors and to build the wall that was approved. Happy to answer any questions, uh, but we are here, as I said, seeking the approval of the extension.
Have members of the board have questions of this attorney?
I'm trying to get my head around it. We were, I was on the board then. I don't remember this.
Yes. Well, I would, I would have loved to have gotten some indication from the objectors or from Hanover Township indicating that this was going on. I have absolutely no doubt that you are being truthful in your representations to us, but it would have been nice to have had some indication that indeed some sort of constructive communications were going on.
I mean, what has happened since then? We were, you were, we were going to raise the height of the wall, so what was it before? So if you can go back...
The, the wall that's there now is 13 and a half feet.
Okay, so now they're...
It also has, has kind of holes throughout it.
Okay.
And so the noise is going above it and through it, and the neighbors were hearing, you know, at, at various hours.
So after all this time, now they're saying it's six, maybe 16 or 24, but what, these discussions were happening in the last four years?
They, and before that, yes. So there's a kind of an ongoing dilemma between, you know, obviously, the higher the wall, the, the less sound that gets through it, but also some of these, you know, properties do a butt right up on the property line, and so visually, uh, they don't want a 32-foot-high wall.
No, I get, I get that.
There's been a back and forth on, you know, what is the appropriate size?
But my, my memory is that the existing wall is also, as you say, not brand spanking new.
Correct.
Are there continued violations that are occurring for the noise?
There have not been continued violations.
Okay.
Did anybody ever think of coming before for an extension when...
Uh, to my knowledge, the, you know, the, the discussions have been ongoing. Uh, they, they picked up more recently. There was a, a lull in the discussions. Uh, they have started up again, I would say, in the last six months, uh, and so, you know, as, as we were looking back at the approvals, we wanted to make sure that, uh, everything was still in order so that, you know, when they do come to an agreement, that a wall can be built.
Did the applicant submit to the board at the time because of the violations or because of the neighborhood's concerns? Is it more the violations?
I think they, they went hand in hand, um, you know, that, from UPS's perspective...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember.
You know, there was an existing sound wall and, you know, they, you know, they only had knowledge that there was an issue because people were voicing concerns.
Okay.
Um, you know, their concerns were also voiced to the county, who's ultimately the party that comes and does the noise study and issues a violation, uh, but working with the county and the neighbors to address it. We had come before the board a few years ago and have not received ongoing violations, and we do continue to work with the neighbors. They, you know, the applicant has also taken other measures to mitigate the noise. They switched to completely white noise alarms rather than the, you know, the loud D thing as you reverse the, the tractor trailers and the shifters on-site. They, you know, they have signs posted everywhere, so the noise has come down, um, but ultimately UPS wants to be a, a good neighbor and to, you know, provide the neighbors with a, a better wall to the extent it will help mitigate noise.
And I would think the residents, if they were concerned that you did not build the wall per the approval that they recall, they would have called my offices and said, because I, I have that all the time, if someone comes before the board and they forget to build, to plant a couple of the trees or the bushes die or anything, they're quick to, to call and say, hey, remember that application that happened at that time? Like, you have to go out and make them do it, and my departments would be the ones that would enforce that, and I haven't received any calls or complaints, so it, it kind of dropped, it dropped off our radar too, to say, hey, what's going on with that?
Andrew?
Yeah, um, but you're gonna, you're proposing, are you proposing to change the wall height and then amended site plan needs to be submitted?
We are not proposing a change at this time because the, the discussions are ongoing. If, if the neighbors ultimately decide that what they want and, and the applicant agrees is a reduced, you know, height of the wall, we would likely need to return to the board for, for an amendment of approval.
Because we're still gonna need to have all of the New Jersey state regulations for noise be complied with.
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's out of our hands.
Understood, and like I said, they, they have not received, you know, ongoing violations for, for any exceedances.
Because if you go back, if you constructed it at any different size, it won't be in compliance and you'd be back at the board anyway.
Anyway.
So, yeah, so if you do end up not building the wall or, or planning on constructing the wall to the same size as approved, you need to come back, yeah.
Understood, and, and that's part of the discussions with the neighbors as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. I guess this isn't technically testimony. Should I be asking for public comment, I guess?
I think we gave our comment.
Are there any public, are there any members of the public who have comments on this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none, I guess this closes, I can't even call it the evidentiary portion of the hearing at this point. Are there any comments? Is, I mean, you're asking for a one-year extension.
They're asking for three one-year extensions.
Well, three, one...
Two to get to today and then an additional one year.
I, I tend to think future-wise rather than past. I think past is past. But, uh, so you're asking for one more year?
Correct.
On top of the not doing it before?
And that, that is the maximum that we're permitted by law. It'll be our third and final extension.
So if you haven't started construction by next September, you'll be back before the board.
Correct.
All right, uh, do I hear a motion of approval?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Didich?
A motion to approve application number 19:513 UPS 801 and 799 Jefferson Road, Block 741, Lots 1.1 and 1.2, extension of time to construct sound walls.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
And, and this is, uh, just to put on the record, it would run through September 16th, 2025, correct? Is that what we're...
So the, the initial app, uh, resolution was dated September 13th, 2021, so I think it would run through the same date of this year and then an additional one year through 2026.
Through 2026, okay.
Yep, I believe that's what we all agreed to.
Yes.
Great, thanks very much, board. I'm very excited.
All right, thank you. Wow, I guess we get to turn to Christine now, our planner. It's showtime.
Showtime. Um, so I guess the first thing on the agenda is the 169 La Cawana Avenue, Block 136, Lot 33, amended redevelopment plan and consistency review. Um, so this was brought before the board for consistency review a few meetings ago, um, which the board granted and, uh, recommended to the council. The council and, um, some of the neighbors had some concerns, particularly about maintaining the wooded area. Um, and in order to sage some of those concerns, we've added two lines to the redevelopment plan. Um, so the first is as part of 9.4.3, it now reads, loading shall be permitted in any yard and shall be accessed by means of accessways detailed in Section 9.1.2 herein, and what is added is provided that loading days shall not directly face an adjacent residential zone or residential use. And the addition of, um, 11.1.6, which says that redevelopment of the site shall be done in a way which minimizes the impact to the existing wetlands, wooded areas, and other existing natural vegetation, and shall be in conformance with buffer areas and setbacks identified in the plan. For the avoidance of doubt, the mature wooded area identified on the site plan, uh, Section 16.0 herein shall remain undisturbed. So it, you know, boots and suspended the redevelopment plan to ensure that the existing wooded area is going to remain. Um, other than that, it doesn't affect any of the previous review and is still consistent with the master plan.
Judy, is this consistent with what you...
Yes, yeah, Matt and I were talking about this. This is good. Exactly, and he was very concerned, and I understand it, so, mm-hmm, thank you. No problem.
All right, any members of the public have any comments on this consistency review? Hearing and seeing none. Is there anything else we need to discuss with regard to this? We just need to vote on accepting the changes as outlined by our planner?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion accepting the out, the changes made by our planner?
I could make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
And, and this is, uh, just to put on the record, it would run through September 16th, 2025, correct? Is that what we're...
So the, the initial app, uh, resolution was dated September 13th, 2021, so I think it would run through the same date of this year and then an additional one year through 2026.
Through 2026, okay.
Yep, I believe that's what we all agreed to.
Yes.
Great, thanks very much, board. I'm very excited.
All right, thank you. Wow, I guess we get to turn to Christine now, our planner. It's showtime.
Showtime. Um, so I guess the first thing on the agenda is the 169 La Cawana Avenue, Block 136, Lot 33, amended redevelopment plan and consistency review. Um, so this was brought before the board for consistency review a few meetings ago, um, which the board granted and, uh, recommended to the council. The council and, um, some of the neighbors had some concerns, particularly about maintaining the wooded area. Um, and in order to sage some of those concerns, we've added two lines to the redevelopment plan. Um, so the first is as part of 9.4.3, it now reads, loading shall be permitted in any yard and shall be accessed by means of accessways detailed in Section 9.1.2 herein, and what is added is provided that loading days shall not directly face an adjacent residential zone or residential use. And the addition of, um, 11.1.6, which says that redevelopment of the site shall be done in a way which minimizes the impact to the existing wetlands, wooded areas, and other existing natural vegetation, and shall be in conformance with buffer areas and setbacks identified in the plan. For the avoidance of doubt, the mature wooded area identified on the site plan, uh, Section 16.0 herein shall remain undisturbed. So it, you know, boots and suspended the redevelopment plan to ensure that the existing wooded area is going to remain. Um, other than that, it doesn't affect any of the previous review and is still consistent with the master plan.
Judy, is this consistent with what you...
Yes, yeah, Matt and I were talking about this. This is good. Exactly, and he was very concerned, and I understand it, so, mm-hmm, thank you. No problem.
All right, any members of the public have any comments on this consistency review? Hearing and seeing none. Is there anything else we need to discuss with regard to this? We just need to vote on accepting the changes as outlined by our planner.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion accepting the out, the changes made by our planner?
I could make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
And, and this is, uh, just to put on the record, it would run through September 16th, 2025, correct? Is that what we're...
So the, the initial app, uh, resolution was dated September 13th, 2021, so I think it would run through the same date of this year and then an additional one year through
That's all I have. If anyone has any questions about the plan?
Okay, any members of the board have any questions on this? Hearing and seeing none. I'm sure the council went over this pretty thoroughly, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes, they did. Yes, Mr. Coop even did it.
Understood, understood.
And of course, you know, they'll still have to go through site plan and come back before this board.
Yeah, it's very sensitive for some of the people in that area, but it is what it is.
As you are well aware, as we are all well aware.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any members of the public wish to comment on this at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Any, no other members of the board wish to question or comment? Do you have any questions for you?
No.
Okay. Well, this closes the evidentiary portion, as it were, of tonight's hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Didich?
A motion to accept the four gate hall drive, Block 175, Lot 52, Zone ROL redevelopment plan. Do we say not inconsistent or not yet?
Yes.
Do we say?
Not inconsistent?
Right.
So plan is not inconsistent with the master plan?
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hernandez, thank you very much. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Dindmore?
Yes. All right, well, we get Nora home in the daylight.
I'm buying a house. So I'm not going anywhere. So I'm buying a house.
As affordable.
I'm not going anywhere.